All right. Okay, so good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting to order, our Committee of the Whole Meeting for December 12th, 2022. It's 7:00 PM. And welcome to our guests in council chambers, as well as to everyone around the table and those watching online. We'll begin with any items added to the agenda. And I do have a couple. First is option to, or I guess, the discussion on the boundary review. So we could just maybe add that under items added, as well as an in-camera item regarding personnel. We just had an update for you there as well. So with those two items added, are there any other items from council? Okay, so could I have a motion to approve the agenda with those additions?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Digdon. It's been moved by Councilor Digdon. Could I have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. It's been moved by Councilor Digdon, seconded by Deputy Warden, that the agenda be approved as presented with those additions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, the next item is the review of the minutes from the November 14th, 2022, Committee of the Whole Meeting. Those were circulated in advance. Were there any errors or omissions? Okay, if not, could I have a motion to approve, please?
I move to the acceptance of the minutes from November 14th.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Sampson. Could I have a seconder, please?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Councilor Sean Sampson for the minutes of November 14th to be approved. Is there any further discussion on those? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion is carried. So now, next on our agenda is presentation. So I'd like to welcome Rita Campbell from the Johnstown Community Development Cooperative Limited to chat with us about the Irish Cove walking trail. And I know, Rita, you have some friends with you in the audience. They can join you here, or they can stick with the gallery. However, however you'd like to arrange it is good with us, so.
I'll slide here.
Okay. All right, so welcome, and thanks so much for coming in to chat with us about this today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having us. And I'll start my timer here. So, yes, I'm from the Johnstown Community Development Co-op, and we wanted to talk about what we're doing with the walking trail. So I'm just going to, I do have a PowerPoint there, and I'm just going to skip over the first two pages, because what I want to bring your attention to is the map on the third page, because a lot of people probably don't realize that there is actually some walking trails in the Irish Cove limestone quarry. And if you're not aware where that is, if you ever stopped at the look-off in Irish Cove and looked down towards the water, all the land on the side of the, between the look-off and the water is basically what we're talking about as the old limestone quarry. So, to date, it was quarried from the '60s to about 2000, and it was reclaimed, which meant that it was all, you know, everything rearranged and everything. So it has actually been disturbed land, which is something important when you're talking about walking trails these days. There, and part of the property is above the highway, but our walking trails are all on the water side of the highway. Yeah, I'm just going to flip to the next thing here. So people have been walking through the quarry to date. There's some, there's some soft trails. People have, local people have walked through there. What we want to do is do a formal trail system in through there, and we're looking at doing it in a three-year plan, or developing it in three-year plan. First year, basically doing the trails that are there. There's three trails. One goes up by a brook. The other one goes through a meadowy area, and the third one joins, basically along the old Route 4 highway, goes around a tailings pond, which is not like the tailings pond in Chedda Camp, but there's beavers living there, and people can skate there in the winter. So we're trying to make those, in the first year, we're going to make those a little more formal, and we're going to groom them, and perhaps, like, just take some of the, there's a couple of places there where we might have to smooth the property out. In the second year, we're going to extend those trails. So each of the trails that are belonging there, that are already there. There is some replanting has happened. Nova Scotia Community College and Department of Natural Resources have done some plantings in there. So in our second year proposal, we have to work with DNR to make sure our trails don't go through the planting area, or work through where they planted them, the trees. And there is a dedication site already within the limestone quarry. It's up on a hill, and it's dedicated to Lynn Beckler, who was a hydrogeologist who died a few years ago, and it actually has a view of the whole quarry. In third year, actually, what I like, the idea is that we're going to actually add access down to the beach. We have about, about 800 meters of beachfront, provide access and provide a dark sky viewing platform over the Bredor, because we're actually at the widest section of the Bredor Lakes right there. And there's not a lot, you're looking across to Escasoni, so that would be the first lake you'd see. In order to do this, because it's, the property belongs, is crown property, we had to, if you look at the next page here, we have, we put in an application for use of the land with the Department of Natural Resources. And the first application is quite short. They got back to us in June, and we had to do a development plan. And we just sent that in in November, and they just got back to us to let us know that they're reviewing that plan. There's a number of questions they asked us after we put the first application in, and it included things like disturbing the land, which is why I mentioned that it is a quarry that has been disturbed before. Because now, in a lot of cases, if you're disturbing the land, then you do have to do an indigenous archaeological study, survey. What we're planning to work on here is actually already disturbed land, so we're hoping they'll take that into consideration. It's disturbed from the quarry, and it's disturbed because there was an old highway going through there. They've also asked us, said that they're not going to do, we're not allowed to plant trees, we're not allowed to cut trees. And they talked a lot, at least when they got back to me, they didn't want the ground disturbed at all, which is very difficult if you're putting signposts and things in. So we did put in our application that we do want that. The quarry is actually part two of what we see as a three-part plan. We own Johnstown Landing, which is the property that's right across from the church and the hall, the old hall. And we actually have a water route, a transcantrail water route on that property. So we see the quarry, the Johnstown Landing, and eventually, perhaps, a path that goes up over Johnstown Mountain and comes back down to the landing to join the three. And because we have a water route, we can actually join it by water. So, you know, someone who's, you'd have to be a good kayaker or a good hiker to do this here, but they could join, you could kayak down, you could hike the trail and kayak back. It's kind of a neat thing, because I don't know how many trails are linked that way. That's our long-term goal. But what we need right now, why we'd like to present to you, is we would like some support to DNR, indicating that this is something that we would, that would be supported from the county. It meets in with the trail development, I think, strategy that you have in, that you just proposed it, which I think you actually included some of our pictures in that trail strategy. We're also working, of course, with Bredor Lake Biosphere, with their goal of having trails around the whole of the Bredor.
That's great.
And, yeah, yeah. So, I'm just talking too fast, it's only six minutes.
That's okay.
Yeah. So, a couple, I think a couple of other things, as I said, we see it as, the things we want to do in there, we don't want to disturb the environment. We can do it, it's actually quite a nice walking area there now, because there's a part that goes through what we consider a meadow. There's a part you can walk kind of along, you're above the shore. There is parking on the one end. It's not a big parking lot, but if it's the old highway, if you go down to where Lake Shore Drive East starts and drive right to the end of the highway, you can park probably about half dozen cars with no problem there. We don't see that this is going to be anything like, you know, as I said, in Chedda Camp with that tailings pond they have there. This is not a green, a beautiful blue tailings pond, but we do have, you know, it is, it is nice and, you know, a nice little beaver in it that you can watch if you're going by there. So, to us, we're going to try to do it very environmentally friendly. We don't want to put gravel paths, we just want to mow it. And right now, we're just walking on trails, so people have gone through ATVs. That's the other thing I should mention. It is going to be strictly a foot trail, footpath, cross-country skiing, walking, even when they're skating in the winter. But ATV's only for safety and security, and for keeping the trails through. But it's not exciting enough for an ATV, really, to attract a lot of ATV usage. But it is, you know, we do want to keep it as a foot trail. And actually, that was one of the things from DNR, is they did not want this as a multi-use trail with ATVs. So, on my last slide, I just mentioned that we would like a letter of support, if that's something we could get from you. We also, we have been developing this, for a few years now, working on this, very much in our own, you know, kind of world down there, and we haven't been participating in any of the strategies. So we see that as, like, that there's actually nice development down there for the other end of the counties, so it's nice there. And of course, like everybody else, would like to be on the radar for grants or funds that you've got. The first year, we expect that, we estimate that it would cost us about $15,000. Second year, about $12,000, and third year, about $6,000. Those are, you know, broad estimates, really, at this point, especially this third year, because I have no idea what it would cost to build a viewing platform.
I'm sure what it would cost now would be different than what it would cost in, however, you know, in a couple of years' time, so we've learned, right?
Yeah, yeah. And the other thing, thing we see doing in there, because there are people actually in there doing research, Cape Breton University research is going on in there. We have on our committee, we're very fortunate to have a hydrogeologist, Fred Beckler, on the committee. And he sees this as a wonderful site for teaching and doing citizen signs. So the signs we're putting in there, we are going to have QR codes on them and link back to signs. In particular, things like the Irish Cove Brook have people post the pictures as climate change, or as time passes. I noticed that after the last Hurricane Fiona, a lot of people posted what happened to the Irish Cove Brook there. So this is a way for scientists as well to keep track of what's going on there without actually being there.
Okay. So if anybody has any questions? Thank you, Rita. Does anyone have any questions for Rita? So maybe I'll just start with a quick one. Are there any other groups that are sort of also vying for use of this property, or is kind of JCDC kind of taking the lead?
Well, JCD, as I said, the local, members of the local community are in there, and they're, they're doing things, and they're on our walking trail group. We had a public meeting, and a number of people have indicated interest on keeping it up. They're also interested in going over the mountain, but that's, you know, it's in the future.
Longer term.
In the future. Because we have the Johnstown Landing, it naturally fell under JCDC, that we didn't have another group in there. However, when we, when we did the tree planting, Nova Scotia Community College, the Bredor Lakes seniors were planting there, JCDC was there, there were a number of other groups that were, were in. We probably have too many groups locally as it is, because we have the, you know, the parish, the fire department. For a very small community, we've probably got about five groups going. So it was kind of nice that we put the walking trail within JCDC, so that we didn't have to start another one.
Yeah, that's great. Okay. And just, so how do you get to them? Like, can you get there from the, from the look-off, or do you have to come into?
You can't get there from the look-off. We've, we've explored that, because the other part about going over the mountain is we have to figure out how to get across the highways. But right now, after you pass the look-off and keep down towards Irish Cove, just where you see the beach, there's a road that goes in there. You could drive all the way in and just park, and there's a bridge that's blocked, so you can't take your vehicle in, and you can just go for a walk there. So there's, you can go to the left and just do a small loop, go to the straight, or go to the right, yeah.
Yeah, interesting.
Or, yeah, go right and then left. We can, if anybody was interested, we have somebody who would take people through, walk there. We have a number of people who walk there every day, actually. Howard being one. I don't know if you still walk there every day, Howard. It's a good place to take your dogs. There is, right now, there is a bit of hunting in there, I think. So fall time might be a little bit.
Hunting season, I think, should be just about wrapped up for deer, anyway.
Yeah. And there are, on Lake Shore Drive West and Lake Shore Drive East, both have people living there, especially on Lake Shore Drive West, and they're the ones who do the trail right now. But it's more haphazard. It's like, who's got kids out there that they want to keep busy for a weekend, so they go and kind of cut brush.
Yeah, maintain the trail.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. So I think we can certainly request, or consider your request for a letter of support. I don't know, councilors, you know, we could, this is a Committee of the Whole, so anything we decide here is really just a recommendation, we'll take forward to a regular council meeting, but we can have a discussion here now about it, or we can just defer it to regular council, unless someone would like to make a motion or a recommendation?
I'd be willing to make a motion, in the fact that we draft a letter to Department of Natural Resources in support of the Irish Cove Trail.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Warden. Okay, so it's been moved by Deputy Warden and seconded by Councilor Mike Digdon that we draft a letter of support to DNR for the Irish Cove reclaimed limestone quarry trails project. That's a mouthful. Thank you for leaving that on the screen.
And just so you notice, we used to call it the Irish Cove Limestone Quarry Project, but we kept putting reclaimed in there, because it does say that the land has been
Yes, yeah, for sure.
Disturbed. Yeah, the hydrogeologists advised us to do that.
Okay, great. So any further discussion on that motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. So we'll take that recommendation forward to regular council at the end of the month, and then it will very likely be ratified. I don't see any reason why it wouldn't, and then we'll provide you with a copy of that one.
Okay, thank you.
As well. Thank you for coming in, Rita, much appreciated. All right. Okay, so next item on our agenda is presentations to Richmond County Food Bank. So I know we have a couple folks from our food banks here with us this evening. So I see Bernice there from St. Peters, and I think Paul over here from Alma Dam. So we're just going to ask for your patience while we halt the meeting for a minute, maybe capture a picture or two, and we'll do this check presentation. I did want to mention that the Budla Deck Food Bank will be supported as well, and we'll drop that off to them this week. And I think you have the check for the Lordways Food Bank as well, and the check for the Bluesdale Food Bank. Am I missing any? I think that's everyone.
I'll step over here.
Okay, so maybe if it's okay, we'll ask Bernice and Paul to come and get a picture, either together or individually, or we'll stand here, I mean. Yeah, if that's okay. We'll do St. Peters first.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks, from Johnstown.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll present this to you on behalf of Richmond County Council. Thank you for the work you do, Bernice. Much appreciated, you and your team.
Much appreciated.
All right.
By our food bank, St. Peters.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
All right, no worries. Thanks.
Beautiful.
Okay, thank you so much for coming in. So our councilors from Alma Dam, would you like to hang out up here with Paul for a minute and take a picture? There you go.
You could have done it, you're the boss.
That's okay.
She's the boss, Paul.
I wouldn't say that.
We thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
All right. Thank you for your help with that, councilors. And thanks again, Bernice and Paul, for being here, and to all of the folks who are volunteering with our food banks each year. It's an invaluable service, it's much needed in our communities, and particularly at this time of year, so. So thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda is an update on our communications plan. So information provided to council on this in advance included a little bit of a background on the plan that we have right now on the website, which, as the CIO, I think, has confirmed is still a draft format. It wasn't really ever adopted formally, and it is more of a statement of intentions rather than a, maybe a, more of, less of a concrete plan. And in 2021, I know, we began work on a communications plan with the county, because it didn't lie, it didn't have those specific strategies and tactics. The work was halted in part because we felt that it would be, I guess, better, better completed after the strategic planning process, so we could get a feel for what residents were expecting in terms of communication. Now with the plan completed, the strat plan completed, we thought this would be a good time to kind of dust off the plan from 2021, the goal being that we create a plan that has achievable, that is achievable and results in consistent and predictable methods of communications that residents can rely upon, which I think we do a lot of now, but it's really to say what we do, as well as to do what we say. So it's to kind of capture it in a, in a way that it leaves a legacy document and a roadmap for councilors who may be different than us in the future, or staff who may be different than, than the current staff in the future, so that we're, we're being consistent regardless of who's sitting at the table. So I guess at this point, I'd open for discussion. I did provide the draft that had been worked on with the Cape Breton Partnership. Carly Appleton had been working on that. And just looking for, I guess, councilor's thoughts on whether or not we should reach out to them to, let's, you know, complete the process and, and get this thing over the finish line. So, folks be open to that? Yeah, I'm seeing some nodding heads. All right, so I guess the motion I would be looking for is to ask staff to reach out to the Cape Breton Partnership for support in revising the June 4th, 2021 draft strategic communications plan. Thank you, Councilor Sean Sampson. Can you repeat that again? The, to ask staff to reach out to the Cape Breton Partnership for support in revising the June 4th, 2021 draft strategic. Okay, good. I just wanted, I didn't hear all the parts, sorry. I will second that. Okay, so it's been moved by Councilor Sean Sampson and seconded by Councilor Melanie Sampson. Is there any further discussion on that item?
I can say, on behalf of Shelley and I, we're quite happy to be part of this now. Where we missed the first part of this, this, you know, because it's going to involve the two of us an awful lot, so hoping to finish this off will be a good framework for us as we go forward, so we can do the assigning just as we're going through it to make sure that we have people assigned to the task. So it'll be a good process for us to go through.
I agree. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, thank you for those comments, Troy. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is over to you, Deputy Warden Sampson, regarding Chronicle Herald and Cape Breton Post delivery.
So this was just in reference to the email I'd sent last week. I know many parts of rural Nova Scotia, people receive notices, I believe it was back in early November. Now, when looking this up, it was a little difficult to find too much information, because of course, I guess, the Chronicle Herald and the Cape Breton Post doesn't probably want to publicize it too much, but the fact that rural delivery in a lot of parts of Nova Scotia was being discontinued. There are a lot of people, we all have a lot of seniors especially within our districts, that aren't all comfortable with using online versions of newspapers. I think this came as a shock to a lot of people, and I think it's a pretty big disappointment. Now, I understand it's a, you know, it's a private business, and we, we obviously can't tell them what to do, but I thought it may be in the best interests of our residents to, for a letter on to Saltwire, to ask them to reconsider, just based on the importance of rural news to, to a lot of people that may not be comfortable with using the online versions.
Great points. Okay, any further comments on that? I know I've, I've certainly heard a little bit from residents about this as well, with their concerns. Any other comments?
Yeah, I mean, same. I've certainly heard some people who are not pleased, and I think the, the speed at which it all, you know, was like, you find it Wednesday, Monday, no paper, is a bit craziness. That said, you know, it's a business, as Deputy Warden has said, but I do think it is incumbent upon us to just at least express our concern with that. I think, again, like, we're asking people in areas where internet service is not the best to access their news from Saltwire by internet. So it seems like a bit backwards, right? I think we're, we're putting people in a position that's not great. The other thing that I, I had read an article in CBC, I think, like, at the end of November or something about it, and they were saying that there were some groups who were even trying to advocate for, like, drop-offs in central and, and locations, like, you know, for example, residents of Bluesdale are not getting the paper delivered to their door, but neither is the convenience store in the village.
Right.
Right? So if we, you know, I would be in support of a letter, and I think that we should be advocating for some type of solution that's at least gets us closer to, you know, I can understand if door-to-door does not make sense, but my understa, I mean, they're, they're delivering newspapers in Cape Breton. So a stop at some locations may be possible and be feasible economically.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Sampson, or Deputy Warden?
I was saying, I'm not sure if this is something that we'd want to make contact with the NSFM as well, only because it's something that, you know, it's, it's a province-wide issue, not just here, obviously. And maybe it would have a little more weight coming from the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities, or several municipalities, you know, at least. We may want to compliment them on that correspondence.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure we're obviously not going to be the only ones that are hearing this, it's going on all over the province.
And we could certainly encourage other municipalities through NSFM to reach out in a similar regard. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so you'd be looking for a letter, then, just expressing your concern about the lack of home delivery, and encouraging, encouraging the company to consider at least drop-offs in central locations in various communities, and encouraging others, other municipalities to express the same concern.
And I think we would want to request that they resume door-to-door delivery, but that if that's not possible, then it, could we get to a second solution, even?
Yeah.
Not ideal, but at least it would be more accessible than...
Because I could think it's a pretty large areas, even within my district, where they wouldn't have a store anywhere, you know, within a half an hour, even, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Okay, well, certainly, that seems to make a lot of sense. I don't know, councilors, if you would have any comments on that?
No, I agree with both, actually. One of them being the, you know, ask back, ask for the door-to-door convenience, however, you know, I'm sure they pulled the plug for a reason, and I'm sure, you know, be it business-wise, or whatever. But again, I like the, I like the idea of if, in worst case scenario, maybe a central location, at least some people may have the opportunity to still...
Or as central as humanly possible.
Or as central as humanly possible.
Yeah. Deputy Warden, it's, okay. Okay, so could I have a motion to that effect, that a letter be written requesting the resumption of door-to-door delivery, or at least considering drop-offs in semi-central locations, and encouraging other municipalities to do the same?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Second. Thank you, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on that item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Okay, next item on the agenda is community acknowledgements, and I do have a couple. Certainly want to acknowledge our November Volunteer of the Month, who is Phil Bowdoin? Am I pronouncing Bowdoin? As a retiree who fell in love with Cape Breton and has made it his home. He is married to his high school sweetheart for 42 years and has two adult daughters, has written three novels, a children's book, and is currently working on another novel. Phil contributes to his community in many ways, and enjoys exploring his Acadian roots, and has a keen interest in the Indigenous and Gaelic cultures. He's always working to improve our human social well-being and our environment. He's active in roadside cleanup efforts throughout his community and surrounding areas, which I know is close to our hearts as a council. We've certainly discussed, you know, that topic at length here, and of course, the community area being like, sort of around Highway 247, Chapel Cove Road, Wharf Road, Berkey's Cove, to name a few. So just wanted to take this moment to thank Phil for his contribution to his community and to our county. He's active in roadside cleanup efforts throughout his community and surrounding areas, which I know is close to our hearts as a council. We've certainly discussed, you know, that, that topic at length here. And of course, the community area being like sort of around Highway 247, Chapel Cove Road, Wharf Road, Berkey's Cove, to name a few. So, just wanted to take this moment to thank Phil for his contribution to his community and to our county. We really appreciate his efforts and I know he'll be receiving a package from the municipality as, in recognition of that. I also wanted to mention that the volunteer nomination form is currently available on our website. And we would please encourage people to nominate people in, in your community if you see anybody go any extra mile. And we know there are lots of folks who do that, so, especially at this time of year. So, many, or, or also, I guess, to your point that you made earlier, councillor Sampson, not everybody has great internet in this region. So, you could also reach out to your local councillor or the staff here at the office and, and we'll be able to get that nomination form to you, so. Okay, I also wanted to say a huge congratulations to the folks who have been putting on Christmas events so far in the county. It's been busy with lots going on. So, just first, I guess, to the extended family of the Village on the Canal Association, who put together the 25th Annual Festival of Trees, which saw 32 trees set up in the Lion's Home in St. Peters this year, which was amazing. And then the Christmas in the Village event, which was a partnership with the Village Commission, including a thank you for the big giant tree from River Roots. If you haven't seen it, it's sitting pretty in the village square right now. And, yeah, the, the, the pretend wrapping paper is sort of coming off one of the blogs, so we'll have to, have to repair that. But it looks, it looks great there right now, truly a community effort because it's a big monster of a tree. Also wanted to thank the team who put together the recent Christmas parade and holiday wonderland experience in Lordways. I, I don't know, deputy warden, I didn't get a chance to go down on a Saturday evening, but it looked spectacular from the photos. I just, huge congratulations to the volunteers in your community there that, that just pulled off an amazing event. And I'm sure there are others in other communities. I, I don't know if anybody would like to speak up about that. Some's coming up, but I'll, over to you, councillor Sampson.
Just wanted to congratulate the Lusdale Volunteer Fire Department and their ladies auxiliary for a very successful food bank drive on Saturday, I think of this weekend. They raised over $2,000, plus they got lots of food for the food banks, so that's great. Tonight, the Lusdale Lions Club is hosting their tree lighting and Jingle Bell Walk, so unfortunately couldn't make it to that because here we are. The weather kind of held that off last week and just wanted to remind people that the tree lighting at Straight Richmond Hospital will be held next Monday night at 6 o'clock, so if you're able to join, we're, we're going to miss that too because we'll be here. But certainly hope that lots of folks come out to that, so, again, big congratulations to all those folks.
Thank you, councillor Melanie. Any other comments from anyone?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, myself, like councillor Melanie said, Almedan Volunteer Fire Department with their food bank raised, I think, over 22 hours of cash and a couple truckloads of food. So, congratulations to them and, and great work on, on their, their part. Just wanted to congratulate and acknowledge everybody involved in Noel Almedan, which was last night. Ever since COVID struck us, Noel Almedan was taken from the forge and then just like a heavy drive by, more or less, where the kids just stay in their vehicles and it's nice and warm and they're in their car seats. So, they come up one side of this driveway and around to the school and back down to her side. And, yeah, so it's a great event and I just want to acknowledge everybody involved in that situation. And also, again, the Almedan Volunteer Fire Department, there was some events here last night, one at the Clarison and one at the New Horizon Senior, so of course, there were some traffic jams. But the, the fire department took care of that. There was only one-way traffic coming, so people were able to get to those events. So, just want to thank everybody involved there. And there was also a musical at the Friends of St. John at the Anglican Church. So, there was a musical event there, so, and a Festival of Trees at the Colaborport, so congratulations.
So, much going on.
Great, great time of year and community spirit and community volunteer. It's, it's great to see you.
It's great to see everybody getting back out as well, you know, with a couple of long years, so.
Yeah, just, I'm just going to throw in a short, you know, for anybody watching that I had no, myself and councillor Sampson, we had the honour standing at the bottom by the tree, passing out treats to all the kids. But councillor Sampson wanted to traumatize a few of the kids, so when they got there, he said, we're collecting all the treats that you got all the way around. So, the kids were like, some of the kids were like, no. There was, there was a few that were willing to give back all the treats, so that was, it was kind of nice to see.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was funny, the first kid, I said, we're just collecting stockings full of treats. I said, you don't have any, do you? And they're like, uh-uh. So, yeah, it was fun, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's awesome. So, if there's no other community acknowledgements, I'm sure there's a ton more we could mention, but, but we'll leave it at that and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is correspondence. We have a couple of pieces of correspondence where action is required. And the first is from our revenue manager Clint Sampson regarding the tax sale of properties in February in 2023 regarding minimum bids. So, you'll see from the memo that Clint has made a few recommendations. One being that District One property number 01415298 be, that, that council authorize the selling of that property for a minimum acceptable bid of $5,000. That if it doesn't sell at that minimum bid, then to proceed and sell the property for basically any bid. I believe that one has been on the tax sale for, it's been three times so far and hasn't been successfully sold yet. So, would councillors be in support of the recommendation from the revenue manager as such?
I am and I'll make the motion to proceed as recommended.
Okay, could I have a second on that?
I guess I'll second it for question purposes.
Okay, thank you councillor Digdon. So, it's been moved by councillor Melanie Sampson and seconded by councillor Mike Digdon, that council accept the recommendation of the revenue manager and CFO. And the council authorize the revenue manager and CFO to sell the property number 01415298 for a minimum acceptable bid of $5,000. And if this property does not sell for the minimum, minimum acceptable bid, to proceed and sell the property for any bid. So.
Yeah, I just, I hadn't seen the $5,000 figure. I don't know if I missed that.
Okay, maybe I, I'm seeing it here in my notes, but it might, could have been just conversation that we had, yeah.
I know the property you're referring to, because it's.
Yeah, the memo shows that the last, that the last minimum bid was $10,000.
That's right, yeah. Okay.
So, this is just a recommended amount by staff. It's not in the memo, it's just a recommended motion.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because my only thought on that was, should it just be almost any bid at this point? It's been three times, you know, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think that's basically what it says.
Yeah.
We're going to say we'd like to have 5,000, but we're, we're in the end, we're going to take.
Well, the way it works though is when this property comes back up at tax sale in February is that we'll re-go through all the minimum bids set by council from the first tax sale to now. So, if, let's say, the first bid was $100,000, we would ask for any bids at $100,000 before we go on to the next level. So, we're not used to seeing properties go to tax sale like three consecutive times. Really, in our opinion, what should be happening is if it doesn't go at one, then the second tax sale should include a motion to have any bid. So, you'll see on the next set of properties where it only went once, now it's going the second time. Really, what we should be doing is just, is selling it if it can sell for at least a dollar in the second tax sale, just because of the amount of time that goes into it, the administration costs, the fees that are getting added to the accounts, we'll just end up writing them off anyways. So, that's the reason for the, for the any bid.
I suppose this one was a little bit unique, just in the sense that that number was awfully high, right? Based on some of the costs associated with that property.
Yeah.
It's not very often, I can't think of any other properties that we've seen that, that came up at those numbers.
It's huge.
No, but we're going to see them, we are going to start seeing them and I guess that's, that's why I seconded the motion, only so we could have conversation on it. I, again, I don't believe in giving away, and I don't like saying it like that, but giving away taxpayers' money. And if we're going to pretty much give this land away for free, then I see no reason to give it away at all. The county of Richmond can proclaim the land just as easy as anyone else, I guess. I don't know how that works, but I, I just find it very disturbing that we paid so much money to tear down an old co-op habit, I guess, the landfill, the tipping fees, the construction fees, and now we're giving the, the land away, a corner lot for little or nothing. And again, it seems to be that, that was the, that was the past practice. However, moving forward, I think if we can't get what land is worth, then we're better off just to leave it within the municipality.
Okay, to, to, so do you, are you suggesting a different kind of use for it or?
Well, again, if we're giving, you know, it, it's, it's a corner lot with water and sewer. Just a corner lot alone with water and sewers works more. I, I know people are waiting for it to get to a certain price. And that being said, you know, I, I don't think we, I know we're not in, we're not landlords and we're not in the, I guess, the business of keeping property, but I don't believe we're in the business of using taxpayers' dollars to dismantle the property and then give it away for nothing.
Okay. So, you know, I guess that's a question for procedural question from us, I guess, or I'm not sure how that would work if, you know, if, for Richmond County, currently the land is not owned by Richmond County, you know, correct?
Yeah, so the, the years ago, a long time ago, my understanding is that the municipality, based on DMJ, has the ability to vest the property. But we stopped that a number of years ago and, and the main reason is for that is because it's exactly that, is that the land has no value. So, again, you're seeing this property go to tax sale, you know, three consecutive times, we're going to afford. So, if it hasn't sold for 10, it's likely that it's going to sell for literally nothing. So, unless the municipality has, you know, unless it's an attractive piece of property or the municipality has an intended use, I see no reason to, to vest it. We would just recommend selling it at tax sale. This is the process. It is unfortunate, as councillor Digden says, is that in these situations, we're taking a big hit. But we're just basically following the MGA and trying to collect the best amount of money or the most amount of money that we can to recoup some of the costs.
Thank you, Jason.
What did it go for the last tax sale?
10,000.
Was it 10?
10,000.
That's what's listed here, yeah. My, my worry would be, I think, that if we end up holding on to it, that it's, it's a, you know, it's, it's not generating any revenue. So, it's, it's only making things worse over time, whereas even if we don't get, I know it, it is disappointing to not get very much for it now. But let's say we get a small amount for it now, well, hopefully that's turned into something and developed and in time, there's tax revenue coming from that.
Right.
The idea is that it comes off our accounts receivable list and that someone hopefully will pay taxes on a go-forward basis, right? So, there'll be additional revenue in that.
And hopefully develop it, yeah.
Do something with it.
So, and, and again, to your point, you know, I guess if, if the value of the property sells for 5,000 and the value of the corner lot is only five or $6,000, then the, what we're going to make is going to be peanuts off it, as opposed to, I just, just a thought. As we go down the list, I'm sure we're going to run into them again. Again, it's not like we're selling a piece of swamp in the middle of nowhere, we're selling a corner lot in, and I, I do understand that nobody has jumped on it. However, the first number was very, very high.
It was, but I mean, even if nobody, nobody jumped out at the 10,000 either, right?
So, would this be a sealed bid or is it an open?
Public auction.
What, pardon me?
Public auctions.
Okay.
Now, is, is there water and sewer energy? I don't think there is across the bridge.
I don't believe there is, no.
I think.
The water and sewer run, oh, Chris will be able to better answer, but the water and sewer, I believe, runs to the church.
Right.
And then it's ran privately from the church across, I think, isn't it?
I think we had this discussion one time.
I don't think there is water and sewer there.
I think there might be water going across to, I think.
Yeah, yes, but nothing going to the.
Right, to the resident, yeah.
Okay.
I'm fairly sure we did have this discussion one of the other times, we were on this specific property, of course, it comes up every time. But, yeah, because I, I didn't realize that either before, that there isn't, isn't a hookup, yeah.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor to proceed with the revenue manager's recommendation. Is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Mate from councillor Digdon. Okay, that motion is carried. All right, thank you, everyone. Great points and it's, it is a stark reality we're facing for sure, so. The next piece of the revenue manager's memo referred to properties in District Two, Three, and Five.
Correction, the first one is actually in District Five, not Two.
Oh, okay. Clan, is that the Clan and Roche?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
You're right, District Five. Thank you. So, in District Three and Five. And it's, I'll list the property numbers when it comes time to do a motion, but the recommendation, I guess, at this time is to, is to have a minimal acceptable, minimum acceptable bid of principal only. And if they do not sell for the minimum acceptable bid, to sell them for half the principal amount only. And if they don't sell for that, then to proceed and sell the properties for any bid. And that gives staff, I guess, the option to, you know, unload the properties because they have already been to a tax sale and I think it was June, June 2022, so.
So, this would be, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a little bit different than we've done previously, right? Because generally, we've only dropped them to principal only.
That's right, yeah.
For the first time after.
No, in the past, during the, during the tax sales, they used to go on.
No, I mean, since we've been here, when they didn't go the first time, we only then dropped it to principal only, correct? Yeah, I don't mean years ago.
Yeah, previously.
Yeah, on the first, I guess, the second time around, yeah. First time back.
Yeah. So, yeah, so.
No, and I'm not, I'm, I'm, I think I'm okay with staff's recommendation on that. I mean, these aren't huge numbers on these and, and it's probably a lot easier if, if they're able to be moved. Whether or not, you know, we're, for the most part, the difference we're talking is hundreds of dollars, not thousands, right?
Correct. Okay, any other comments on this?
So, is there, I guess, is there a larger list than what we're seeing here or this is just what the?
This is just the list of requested minimum bids.
Okay.
There is a larger list, yeah, but those.
This is not the full.
I don't know that that's good.
Not good.
Not good, but yes. Yeah. Okay, so any other questions or comments on the recommendation from staff?
I don't know, I would be, I would tend to lean towards just principal only, only because I just feel like we're still not in normal times of tax sales. Like that June was maybe not as normal as, because we had it in person in June, right?
It was in person and it was packed.
Oh, okay, never mind. I'm with you.
Well, and I think probably because we had had a couple sealed bids before that, right?
Then I, then I'm fine with that, yeah, that's fine. I was just, I didn't realize that. Thank you, I should have asked first.
Deputy Warden, did you have a?
No, I was just going to say, I, I could go either way on it, but I, I mean, I had even, I had heard from some people that they liked the sealed bids as well, right?
Yes, so did I, yeah.
At the end of the day, it doesn't matter to me, I'm not partaking.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. And is this, right now, are we currently doing all of the, all of the tax sales, public auction, or will we go like one sealed bid, one public?
Well, our plan was to resume public auction, but if council's desire is to do one of each year, because we're doing two a year, we could look at that as well.
Okay.
It's really, to you guys, generally speaking, before COVID, it was all public auction.
Yes.
We hadn't done a sealed tender before.
Yeah, but I didn't remember your comments that the sealed tender was, that tender went really well.
It went really well. I mean, I know some people have the notion that it's not as open and transparent because it's a sealed bid, but it went really well and a lot of people, we've got a lot of good feedback about it as well.
It's a bit opening as public, correct?
Yes, it's really.
Yeah. Okay. Well, in the meantime, I think we'll deal with the recommendation from staff at hand, which is to, to have the bids go forward first at principal only and then half the principal and then any amount. So, could I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, deputy warden. Could I have a second, or please?
I'll second.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. So, it's been moved by the deputy warden and seconded by councillor Melanie Sampson. The council accept the recommendation of the revenue manager and CFO. And the council authorize the revenue manager and CFO to sell property numbers 02465418, 03739511, 03927415, 04537521, 05176328, and 07944063 for a minimal, minimum acceptable bid of principal only. And if these properties do not sell, for the minimum acceptable bid, to sell them for half the principal only amount. And if they don't sell for half the principal only, to proceed and sell the properties for any bid.
That's a mouthful.
Please don't make me say that again. Is there any further discussion?
Just going to ask if you could repeat.
Could you repeat the motion?
So, again, I would only, I would only emphasize, like, you know, the minimal acceptable will be a design that open for any amount, I feel is, we're giving land away that, you know, not that we may have use for, but again, that we are giving away for nothing.
Okay. Okay, thank you councillor Digdon. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Councillor Digdon has registered in a vote. All right, thank you, everyone. That motion is carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is from Jason Martell, CFO, regarding the village. Okay, the next item on the agenda is from Jason Martell, CFO, regarding the Village of St. Peters guarantee request. So this item comes from, obviously, the village, and they are seeking a draft guarantee as per the memo that was provided by the CFO. And maybe I'll just open that for discussion. We would be looking to pass the attached resolution in the package, which I'll, again, I'll read one time only. So I would like to open for discussion before we get into that. So any questions or comments from council? All right, so at this time, they're seeking approval for a loan guarantee in the amount of $56,407.50 for the purpose of purchasing a new Kubota cab tractor for the sidewalks. So as per the MGA, we would need to, we would need to approve that guarantee here at this council. So I'd be looking for a motion for, from council to approve the attached draft guarantee. I believe it was in the package.
It was?
Yes, okay, good. All right.
I'll make that motion.
Yep, thank you, councillor Mike Digdon. Could I have a seconder on that, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, deputy Warden. Are you ready?
Here we go.
There we go. Whereas the Village of St. Peters is a village situated within the municipality of the county of Richmond, whereas the Village of St. Peters has, with the approval of the electors of the village, determined to borrow the aggregate principal amount of $56,407.50 for the purpose of purchasing a sidewalk tractor. Whereas the Village of St. Peters has requested that the municipality guarantee said borrowing. And whereas Section 89 of the Municipal Government Act provides that a municipality may guarantee a loan for a village. And whereas Section 88.3 of the Municipal Government Act provides that no guarantee of a borrowing by, by a municipality shall have effect unless the Minister of Municipal Housing, Municipal Affairs and Housing has approved of the proposed borrowing or debenture of the proposed guarantee. Be it therefore resolved that the municipality of the county of Richmond does hereby approve the borrowing by the Village of St. Peters, the aggregate principal amount of $56,407.50 for the purposes set out above. That's subject to the approval of the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing. The municipality does unconditionally guarantee repayment of the principal and interest of the borrowing so made. And that upon the issue of the debentures, the mayor and clerk of the municipality, the warden and clerk of the municipality do sign the guarantee attached to each of the debentures and affix thereto the corporate seal of the municipality. So any further discussion on that resolution? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay, next item on the agenda is a memo from Kathleen Jeffrey, the manager of accounting and finance regarding a recommendation to write off inactive accounts. And just ask our councillors if they have any comments on that, concerns?
I just have a question, and perhaps we did this last year, because I did miss a meeting at this time last year. So can I, I'm, my understanding from the memo is that these are inactive accounts because PVSC told us to mark them as inactive? And I did, I did read through some of the, the reason descriptions or whatever, but I'm, can I just get a little more education on that? I'm just not sure that I can.
Sure, maybe I'll refer that either to CAO, to our CFO.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so in the memo, basically, the main reasons would be land expropriation, mobile homes sold off property, and double assessments. But if you look down at the last page as they're providing the memo, you're right in saying this is direct from PVSC, so it's, it's out of our control, so to speak.
Okay.
It's formality to write them off. So the main reasons are either double assessments.
Okay.
Or consolidation parcels, so if two lands got consolidated or whatever.
Okay.
Or if the assessment was, so by double assessments, meaning if that property, if they, PVSC deemed that that property was already assessed on another account number, then really it's being double assessed.
Okay, and what does work order inspection mean?
Yeah, so that one is just that basically someone was sent out to inspect it. But most, I did look at that, some, most of those reasons are basically double assessments.
Okay.
So someone may have called, or maybe someone from our office may have sent them out and said, hey, can you go take a look at this?
Okay.
So PVSC triggered a work order, and basically they deemed it was a double assessment, and it's inactive, they inactivate the account.
Okay.
So yeah, it's fairly standard practice. We may have done it once, I think, since this council was elected.
Right, I did miss the meet, like, this meeting last year I missed. So it could have happened at that meeting, and I just missed it.
It's fairly standard practice.
Yeah, okay, so, thank you.
It's cleanup for us, yeah.
Yep, perfect, thank you.
It actually gives a breakdown, like you said, Jason, on the.
Yeah.
No, I know, I just didn't know what the things meant.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
No, great. Thank you, Jason. So we do have a recommendation to accept, or we do have a, a motion. We would need to accept the recommendation if council's in agreement with that. Could I have a motion to that effect, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, deputy Warden. Could I have a seconder? I'll second that. Thank you, councillor Melanie Sampson. So the motion is, has been moved by deputy Warden, seconded by councillor Sampson. That council accept the recommendation of the manager of accounting and finance and the CFO. And the council authorize the manager of accounting and finance and the CFO to proceed and write off the principal and interest associated with the inactive accounts in a total amount of $28,209.40. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, thank you, everyone. So the next item on the agenda is again another correspondence item where action is required. And it is a request from Richmond River Roots for a letter of support regarding the, I think, the building of a new greenhouse, or, I'm trying to load that up here.
Second battery.
Yes, the terminology is, there we go. A second climate battery greenhouse, to be specific. So essentially, they're, they're proposing to the Sustainable Communities Challenge Fund to receive funding for that, for that work, which would be, I think, a great addition to their property. And they're seeking a letter of support. The grant submission deadline is December 16th. So would councillors be, would councillors be in favor of providing that letter of support?
For sure, yeah.
Okay, so could I have a motion, please, to that effect?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, councillor Sean Sampson. Thank you, deputy Warden. So it's been moved by councillor Sean Sampson, seconded by deputy Warden, that the Warden draft a letter of support for the Richmond River Roots Society for their SCCF proposal to obtain a second climate battery greenhouse. Right, any further discussion?
Yeah, for me, just want to wish them luck in that being in the food business, knowing what's happening the last, you know, six months to a year, even recently with the price of produce going through the roof. So when I see access to fresh and affordable produce, you know, I, I wish them all the luck in the world and with support, any, any help we can give them for sure.
Absolutely, well said.
They got some good news today as well. They had applied for a grant through the East Coast Credit Union, and they received a $10,000 grant as well towards, so they're well on their way, I think.
Yeah, and that's, it is excellent news because the SCCF requires that matching funding, right? So it's, it's really wonderful.
Yeah, so it's exciting times for them. I was there this summer, they got a great little operation.
They do. That's right, they want one less tree and $1,000 more dollars.
Yeah, well, they need their own. They need their own now, yeah.
That's right. Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. So the next item on our agenda is unfinished business related to the Atlantic Biosphere project. So this did come before council, and we had recommended that staff want to do some digging on it. So maybe over to you, CAO Troy, for an update.
Yeah, I'm Adam Morgan, through you to council and everybody else present. We did reach out to the gentleman that's proposing this. We have a meeting scheduled with him tomorrow, weather permitting. He was coming here, but we'll call him in the morning if that just has to be moved to later in the week. He is reviewing the application, and the meeting is with myself and the CFO to make sure that we clearly understand the obligations of the municipality as he looks to move this project forward. So we'll, we'll bring that back to you guys once we meet with him.
Great. Okay, any questions for Troy on that, council? Okay, thank you, Troy.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is the review of checks issued for November 2022. Do we have any questions for the CAO on those? Okay, hearing done, we'll move on. The next item is the review of action items. So I know I did want to just give a quick update on a couple of those. I have put out a request to gather some additional information about the washouts on Oban Road, including from the MLA before formalizing a letter, or not Oban Road, but in Oban, before formalizing a letter. And the, also the marketing levy letter has gone to Minister Dunn, as well as the federal boundary review letter's been completed and sent to MP Kellyway. So those are taken care of. Any questions on the action items? No? Okay, so then the next item is items added to the agenda. So we'll cover off the boundary review first, because we did, we did have, I guess, some email conversations back and forth, and certainly had discussed at a last special meeting about this. John Heseltine with Stantec is going to be in the region on Wednesday evening, or.
Thursday afternoon.
Thursday afternoon before 6:00 PM, if we would like to meet with him in person to really look at this. Because I think at our last special meeting, you know, what we had recommended, he had come back after that with additional recommendations, which, you know, some of us kind of felt was maybe a little bit more of a significant change. But we do have an opportunity to sit with him in person to chat through what he's talking about. And would like to know if council is willing to do that at this stage of the game, if he would be available Wednesday evening.
Oh, yeah, it's a must.
Seven PM?
Wednesday, yeah, for sure, yeah, Wednesday.
I don't, I don't know yet, but proceed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and.
I'd have to check my calendar.
Yeah, and if folks need to call in to whatever, you know what I mean, we'll, we'll make that happen.
So we're talking Wednesday of this week, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, so this won't be really a presentation or an update or where we're making decisions. I think it's just going to be, again, a consultation where we have an opportunity to understand how he's working through the numbers. So we'll start with that, great.
You find your spreadsheets are working?
My spreadsheets are always working, councillor Digdon.
I didn't want to put you on the spot.
I do find it's working.
Maybe you can bring that on Wednesday night?
Yes, I can.
That we can pick some scenarios, because it is a pretty fast spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Like, and it doesn't take long just to move scenarios around.
Yeah, will do.
Sorry for questioning your spreadsheet.
That's okay. I just close to my heart those spreadsheets, you know? That's not a joke. All right, so thanks, everyone, for that. The next item on the agenda was to add an in-camera item, which I think we'll take care of, but we should probably open for question period first. Our, there's no one in our gallery right now, but we'll just give it a few minutes in case anybody would like to call in. If there are media watching, we'll, we'll take questions after the meeting. Question period would be more for members of the public, and it's not restricted to items on the agenda, so. We'll give that a minute.
Send it off to John.
Mm-hmm, great.
I hear somebody typing out.
Me.
It's like Shelley's expecting a phone call.
Just in case, yeah. All right, it's, I don't think our phone is ringing, so thank you, Shelley, for being on deck for that. So with that, question period, we'll call it closed, and I will ask for a motion to move us in camera, please.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, councillor Sean Sampson. Could I have a seconder, please?
I'll second that.
Okay, thanks, deputy Warden. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. Thanks, everyone.